Good evening. I would like to call to all of the September 3th Committee of the Hall Meeting. Today is Thursday, September 3rd, Committee of the Hall Meeting, East Baton Rouge School Board. We will start with our notice. The public will be allowed to attend at a reduced rate of 50% capacity of the Professional Development Center meeting room space. Once the capacity has been reached, admission info and space will be closed. Our audience members will be required to wear a mask at all times. Masks will be available upon request. Our audience members will undergo a temperature screening as well prior to entering the meeting room. A period for a written public comment will be provided before the meeting is over as before each action is taken by the board on an action item. In the videos wishing to make a public comment about any of the posted actions, we need to click on the agenda item in the box and submit where the highlighted public comment happening on the agenda items details. Upon closing of the comments, the board vice president will read into the record the public comments that have been submitted. At this time, we will call the meeting to all with the indication to be led by school board member Conner Webb and the pledge of allegiance to be led by school board member Don Carlos.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Creator, with a new school year upon us, we pray for the community of Lake Charles and Cameron Parish, for their continued safety and well-being, for the restoration of their homes, workplaces, schools, and places of work. Please give them all that they need. We pray for our students, that you would ease their anxiety about going back to school amidst the pandemic. We pray for safety for those returning to in-person classes, and for the needed technology, self-discipline, and adult oversight for those learning online. Would you ensure that every child has enough to eat, a supportive network of friends and family, and perseverance to face every challenge with your strength? We pray for our caregivers and parents, that you would grant them wisdom about schooling. We pray for your provision, physically, spiritually, emotionally, and financially. We pray for a support system that they can turn to when the challenges of life are overwhelming. We pray for churches and believers to surround local families with more prayer and support this year than ever before. We pray that our teachers and school staff, that you would grant them supernatural peace and discernment. We pray for wisdom for school district leaders, and for the safety of every staff person on every school campus. May the community rally around our schools to provide the emotional support needed by our teachers and school staff as they educate our children. We pray for our community members, that your faithfulness and goodness would be evident through our actions, as we love the students and school staff as you first loved us. Amidst, especially amidst this pandemic, grant us opportunities to develop meaningful relationships in safe ways, and may we strive to serve as Jesus did with grace and humility. In his name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, Madam Secretary, would you please make her up?
District 7, President Godey?
Here.
District 3, Vice President Howard?
Present.
District 1, Mr. Blue?
Here.
District 2, Mr. Lannis? District 3, Ms. Collins?
Present.
District 5, sorry, that was 4, Ms. Collins. 5, Ms. Ware Jackson?
Yes.
District 6, Ms. Dyson?
Hi.
District 8, Ms. Benard?
Present.
District 9, Mr. Tatum?
We have a call. Our first item is our update to receive from information only is an update from Master Superintendent. Ms. Brown?
Good evening. Thank you, Vice President, Mr. Howard. I just wanted to just share for a quick minute some of the updates that we have had over the past week regarding the reopening of schools. I think it's been a very, very important week for us to discuss some of the opportunities that we are preparing for our students. So, we have seen over the past four weeks successive decline in cases, and we will be continuing to watch that as we go through this process. But for right now, our intent is to open schools hybrid for September 14th, and making sure that our children come back in a safe environment in the hybrid model, where students will be going to school with the last names beginning with A through K in person on Monday and Tuesday, and this group will actually be working virtually Wednesday through Friday. We also would love to see back our students with the last names beginning L through Z, and they will start on Thursday and Friday of that week. We're so excited to get them back, and they also will be learning virtually Monday through Wednesday. So, we also have the opportunity for our employees of East Baton Rouge Parish Schools to bring their children to their assigned schools for four days a week. We believe that that is critically important, so that we can get our teachers the opportunity to be in classrooms with your children. So, that is our opportunity to make sure that we have our teachers and our students back in our schools. We also know that we have Wednesday off every week. It's not off, the children will be learning, teachers will be teaching, but there will be a deep cleaning on that day across all of the classrooms, the schools, as well as the buses. So, those are some very, very important opportunities for our families to see a cohort of students on Monday and Tuesday, and a different cohort of students on Thursday and Friday, and that deep cleaning in between each of those groups of students coming to the school. So, it's been a significant amount of work by our administrators, by our students, and by our parents and guardians, in working with our children during this time of virtual learning. It's important also to note that families will have the opportunity to participate, continue participating in the virtual learning after September 14th. They will need to make sure that they opt into the virtual environment by no later than September 8th. There is an opportunity for parents to resubmit that they want to remain in virtual learning, and we will be able to continue to have those students participate from their homes in a virtual learning environment. We know that this is a very volatile, interesting time in our community with the COVID cases, and so if there is a spike or an increase, we will be working with our health advisory committee, and that advisory committee will work with us to adjust any needs that we might need to make to go back to virtual learning. So, we believe that we are at the right place and at the right time to open schools again on September 14th for grades pre-K to 5. We think that it's very, very important to get our earliest learners back first, and get our kids really, really learning in the environment where we know that they can do best, which is the classroom. So, with that, I would like also to move on to just another piece of information that's very important to all of our stakeholders. With the weather interruptions, we have had to amend the 2021 school year weather interruptions and COVID interruptions to implement the following changes, to add instructional minutes due to the loss of time, instructional time due to COVID and the recent hurricanes events. So, the losing of the State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education actually requires the district to adopt, sorry, adopt an academic calendar that provides a very specific minimum number of minutes, and that is 63,720 instructional minutes. And by amending our calendar, we are going to be able to recover those dates, two of the dates that we have lost. We are looking, we will be changing the calendar. September 16th will be changed from a half day of instruction to a full day of instruction. And the October 9th Professional Development Day that is on the calendar, we are going to be changing that from a, from a Professional Development Day to a full day of instruction for the students. So, what that does is it actually gives us the, a little bit more than the minimal numbers of instructional minutes that we need. We need 63,720, and by adding the opportunity for children to learn on those two days, we will have 63,810. So, we absolutely will continue to meet the instructional minutes required by the state, and we think that that's really important for everybody to know. There will be additional communication around that, and we've been working with principals, and we will continue to make sure that we continue to communicate that. So, one of the other things that's very important is that we are really trying very hard to welcome all the students from the school parishes devastated by Hurricane Laura. Registration for all students really should be directed to our Child Welfare and Attendance Office. That phone number is 225-456-5080 to register. In addition, I think it's very important for our families to know that when you register through the Child Welfare and Attendance Office, there are a significant amount of additional resources that are prepared and ready for our families that need them in a time of a crisis. So, the other piece is we have had to change the summer graduation diploma presentation. We've had to postpone it. We are committed to these students and making sure that they have the opportunity to receive their diplomas. So, the new date is going to be Monday, September 14th. So, I just wanted to make sure that the board members are aware, if you'd like to, you know, participate or go by and see, as well as our community members to know that we are honoring all of our graduates, and making sure that they have time to collect and be recognized in their summer graduate diploma presentation plan for each of those schools. So, it's very interesting also just that the Early College Academy was approved right before the COVID-19 closure, but now due to the continuous collaboration between East Baton Rouge Parish Schools, the Chancellor of BRCC, and C-Tech Advisory Board, the principal of Broadmoor High School is actually being able to pilot and move ahead with the beginning pilot group of students. So, we're very excited about that. This academy at Broadmoor will afford students the opportunity to earn an associate's degree in information technology application development, network engineering, and motor vehicle technology. So, we've planned a modified ribbon cutting in sort of the hybrid meeting opportunity. It's scheduled for September 22nd at 10:30. So, I think it's very important that this is one of the goals that we have looked at, is making sure that more children have the opportunity to participate in an associate, in associate degree program at our high schools. And so, we're seeing that beginning to take place at Broadmoor, and we anticipate to see more of that happening across the school district in the near future. So, I just thank you for this opportunity to share some updates, and back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Arm, are there any requests to speak on the key? All right. The board is clear. We will move to our second receipt for information only. It is an update from Liberty High School renaming, however related to cost and funding.
Yes. Yes. If you'd like to start, I can.
I'll go ahead and get started. Thank you, Vice President Howard. As you know, we've been going through the cost of renaming Liberty High School, and have gone through many different wildly gyrating estimates, but we think we have this finally nailed down through both active costs, things for things like uniforms and things like that, plus estimates that have been run through CSRS. So, the final cost of the renaming of Liberty High School would be approximately $60,000 for athletic uniforms, $17,000 for school rebranding things like shirts and all those sorts of things that we're doing in there, and then signage, including the wallpapering in the school that had Lee High School and things on it, $93,500, for a total of approximately $170,488. So, these numbers are pretty well secured to date, and next meeting I'll read out the list of people who have contributed, but to date we had a little bit over $55,000 submitted as donations for that effort. I encourage everyone who may be listening to please go to the EBR Foundation website. It's foundationebb.org, and there is a place to donate that, because this is money that was not in the general fund budget. And so, one of the things we will be doing is as soon as we can get a good deal with the final amount of donations, it will be up to us to work with staff to figure out what kind of appropriation we'll make to cover the remaining cost of this naming, because it was not included in any budget. So, I don't know if you'd like to.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. Godey. I really appreciate the work that was done by CSRS. They went in and really scrubbed everything. We had a much higher estimate earlier through this process, and I really think that that work really, really kept it at exactly what we need to do at the highest level to meet the needs of the students and the school. So, the numbers that we were able to get out to the board members, I think, are a great reflection on really, really working hard and making sure that the students have what they need at their school under Liberty High School, and honoring them with their new school name. So, we will continue to work with the foundation to get more funds. We have had some success with the foundation, and I expect to see more. I also really appreciate the work of this board, making the commitment to the change. I think it's critical to this community, and I just wanted to thank this board, as well as the community donations thus far, and our commitment to getting this work done. So, thank you, Mr. Godey.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you, Mr. Godey. We will move on in our agenda to our next items for consideration. It is a grant. It is a consideration of the following grants: Blandit Explorations Grants in the amount of $2,500 to provide the roaming technology project at Glasgow Middle. The Debbie Asher Kelly G. Cook Senior Foundation in the amount of $25,000 to provide funding for the Goldwood Connected Project for Hot Spots. UNU N-Guard will give him a grant in the amount of $18,000 to provide funding for Goldwood Connected Project for Hot Spots. At this time, I will entertain a motion. Subway by Ms. Blue, seconded by Mr. Lannis. Are there any questions or concerns from the board? I don't have any requests to speak, so if you could just shoot me a hand, that would be awesome. All right. I do not see any questions or comments from the board. I will check the public comments online. Give me one second. No public comments online. Are there anyone who in the audience who wish to speak on this agenda item? Same now, we'll go back to the board. Madam Secretary?
Please vote.
Did you, did your voting? I'm gonna refresh it and see. Are we waiting on something?
I'm waiting to see if everybody, are you logged in?
Uh-uh. I mean, I'm logged in, but it hasn't popped up, the module to vote.
We'll do a roll call.
Thank you.
Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Lannis?
Yay.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Collins? Ms. Ware Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Dyson?
Yes.
Mr. Godey?
Yes.
Ms. Benard?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Our next item for consideration is a professional service contract. Professional services contract, and it's a consideration of the cost for the approval for the professional service contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the following: The International Institute for Restorative Practices in the amount of $30,292 to provide professional learning services for schools implementing restorative practice. The funding source is a tax fund. The Arts Council of the Golden Bay Media in the amount of $29,500 to provide arts integration and education and residence performance for Park Elementary. Funding source, general fund. Douglas Manship Center, scene works using the Theater Complex, Hovin Incorporated Manship Theater, in the amount of $14,000 to provide virtual services for East Baton Rouge Parish teachers and students. Funding sources, the general fund. Kids Orchestra in the amount of $20,000 to provide after-school enrichment for K through 5 students. Funding source, general fund. Volunteer persons at public schools in the amount of $25,000 and $58,000 respectively for everybody, reason everyone counts programs. Funding source, Title I, general fund. I will be pulling item number F. Should I read it into the record, Mr.? No, all right. Item number F has been pulled. At this time, I will entertain a motion. Subway by Ms. Ware Jackson, seconded by Ms. Lannis. All right. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Same now, we'll go to comments from the audience. I will refresh the comments online. Same now, we'll go back to the board. Madam Secretary?
Ms. Ware Jackson?
You have a question? Ms. Ware Jackson, sorry. Green button, Ms. Ware Jackson. You just press the push, and when the green comes on, it'll be on. There you go. Well, it's not on yet still. One second, Ms. Ware Jackson. It's still not on. There you go.
About the International Institute for Restorative Practices?
Yes, Ms. Taylor Johnson, please. Or Mr. Burden case.
Really, I have the same question about three items. I really wanted to know about how many schools are included for these services for this one, restorative practices, for manship theater, and kids orchestra.
Good evening, Superintendent Brown, President Godey, and Vice President Howard, and members of the board. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak about restorative practices. How many schools are participating? There are 24 schools participating in restorative practices. Thirteen of those schools are Innovation Network schools, five schools are alternative schools, and there are six other schools that volunteered to be a part of the process. We're phasing it out. We'll have more schools to join next year. So, a total of 24 schools.
Thanks.
Ms. Johnson, before you, before you leave, I do have a question. Is it possible to, once this program is rolled out, for us to get some kind of report, like what does this actually entail? Because we hear a lot about like restorative practices, and people are practicing restorative practices, but when you hear about the discipline rates and the suspension rates in our schools, they don't really match up. So, I really would like to know like what outcome this program is actually having that's producing like a positive outcome to like change the methods of our discipline plan. There's been a lot of talks about discipline in Louisiana lately, and the talks haven't been good. And so, the information we see, if we had a program that's working, I'd like to see if we can get more information on a more frequent basis about how this program is actually working and restorative practice being placed in schools.
Yes, we've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes, and we will roll out, especially with Innovation Network reports out during their quarterly meetings. A part of this, we have a goal set for teacher training, actually interactions with students that result in restorative practices versus the goals that we're establishing for discipline. So, all of that is built into the framework, and we'll hear more about it as soon as the Innovation Network has their quarterly meetings, and then we'll roll out what that looks like for the other schools that are not a part of the Innovation Network. So, it will be reported out each quarter.
Thank you. And just maybe for Ms. Brown, and I know we've had some transition in leadership as it relates to the Innovation Network, so if we could get that on the next board agenda, like some kind of report about what's happening inside of the Innovation Network since we've had a leadership transition, who's taking over, what are we doing, that would be great, and that just ties into what you just talked about with that quarterly report. So, Ms. Brown, if we could get an update on that soon, that would be awesome. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
So, all of those are within the Innovation Network, the schools that are participating with restorative practices, are they all inside the Innovation Network?
We have 24 schools. Thirteen of them are Innovation Network schools, five are alternative schools, and six are other schools. We use data to determine which were our year one schools, and then we'll phase in the other schools that are not a part of the 24 schools.
So, the others are just traditional?
Yes, we have Westdale Middle. We have Woodlawn Middle. Their teachers, their leadership team, their discipline team was interested in being a part of this, and actually reached out to make sure that they wanted, they wanted the training as well. So, we have Westdale, we have Woodlawn Middle, we have Liberty High, Astroma High, and Scottville High as part of those other sets of schools.
Okay. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Joffe, Mr. Joffe, excuse me.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Ware, tell me the two contracts she asked about again. Make sure I'm telling you correctly.
Manship and kids orchestra.
Manship is usually for the entire district, and it allows services for those children to go to performances, as well as get master teachers to come in to teach arts programming. But this year, it's just for Highland Elementary and White Hills. Reason being, they have no arts programming at all at their schools, and it would just be remiss of me not to have some type of art at schools. So, that's why it's just for those two schools. Kids orchestras for any student in the district who would like to participate in some type of strings program, and it is after school, it is tuition-based. They provide the instruments, and we pay for the service for any child in the district.
Let me ask you about the Arts Council's thing over at Park. You know, I'm really excited about Park having something special over there, you know, because, you know, the history with Park. They also have a room that has like 25 pianos in there, and I understand that they don't have a music teacher. Do you know whether some of this service will be able to address some of that need, or will we need to look somewhere else to have that?
I can. I'm going to talk, Ms. Donaldson didn't know yet. We're going to talk. It was a part-time teacher there, because that was a service program that was provided from an outside entity. So, usually we'll have a part-time staff for that. I'm going to talk to her. I just found out that that person is no longer there to see if we can get another part-time teacher for that position. But the Arts Council's contract provides services for the, all areas of the arts to Park Elementary. It's an art integration piece which concentrates on the arts as well as math together. Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Joffe.
Thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Joffe, Mr. Joffe. And Ms. Dyson?
So, with the site-based budgeting and the principals using their funding to determine what teachers they have, did that not factor in at all? Are all the other schools having to use some of their allotted staffing?
For what?
To have teachers?
To have teachers. Well, we, they are allotted teachers through HR, and that was always a part-time spot, and it was shared between two schools. So, I don't know if it's just not a teacher there in that spot yet, Ms. McDonald, Ms. Donaldson knows, or we're waiting to find a teacher to take that part-time position.
So, we have a shortage in art teachers, or they chose not to use that as part of their staffing?
Good afternoon. So, I'm not certain specifically for that particular school. We will look into it to see if it was a selection, but sometimes I think, well, I think possibly due to the pandemic and the, you know, people making some transitions, that it might have just been lost in the shuffle. So, we will reach out to the principal to make sure that, because it was a part-time person that worked there, and so part-time people sometimes come and go. And so, we'll make sure that we reach out to her and help her find another person to, to fill that particular need and vacancy. But principals do have some autonomy about the programming that they offer on their campuses, and so we work with them to allow them to select some different things, and so we will reach out and we try to, if they don't have the number of students, we try to share those services across different schools. So, we do some sharing and things like that, but we will reach out to make sure.
Okay. I just am curious if you could follow up with me on, was that a choice that was? made because they gathered something else and they used their half point-five?
Position for?
Position, yeah.
Yes, ma'am, we, we can, we can find out.
Principals juggle that all the time, and a lot of times, I've heard that they've just had to give up ancillaries and stuff so that they could have their phone answered and things like that, so.
Yeah.
As far as they only get this many teachers and?
So, we do staff based upon the number of students.
Right.
Uh, on the campuses, and what we try to work to do is, again, if this school is a very small school.
I know.
We might pair two schools together to share the, share the resources. Um, and so, you know, sometimes tough decisions are made, but we do want to make sure, and we love the fact that the community, uh, supports us with different programming and different opportunities for exposure, and so, uh, as we work together, we'll make sure, and I will get you some information with regards to that particular school.
Okay, and I guess the one that it's shared with, and what are they?
When we're at elementary, so we, we will check to see.
What are they doing, yeah?
Yeah, we'll check to see what decisions were made, and, um, we'll, we'll get back to you about that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. And then, one other thing, um, just, uh, as a, um, budgetary issue, I, um, and this isn't for either of you all, but thank you for your time. Um, I did ask, uh, about, on these items that are coming through as general fund, uh, funding, I did get clarification that they came through, the ones that are listed as general fund, came through in our general fund budget, so that they're not new to expense a general fund that didn't get added into our, uh, book. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Alright, uh, Mr. Lannis.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Howard. Uh, my question is for Mr. Joffe, if you could, please come back to the mic. First of all, I like your mask. I'll be sure to wear my case on mask next time.
Please do.
Yes, so my question is, uh, are these real current grants?
Yes, they are. These are yearly grants. Um, I inherited them from the last performing arts director, saw the importance of them, and we've just kept them, yes.
Okay, I asked that question because I know you, you mentioned White Hills.
Yes.
And I know seeing they'll be merging with Brownfield, uh, Brownfield, uh, Elementary, so that's why I asked that question.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Lannis. Um, are there any additional questions from the board? The board is clear. Um, did I go to the audience yet, Ms. Lannis? I don't know about that. Okay, um, let me go to the audience, just one second. Alright, any more comments? Yes, sir.
Thank you, my name is James Finney. I'm sure the grants are fine. I'm just stunned that I heard the statement that you have no art instruction at two of your elementary schools. That's inexcusable and better be solved by the next board meeting. That's just atrocious. It's educational malpractice, child abuse, it's asinine. There is no way you should have neighborhood elementary schools without art teachers there every week, frankly, every day. Um, so, I'm just stunned and almost speechless. Please address it soon.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments from the audience? Seeing now, we will turn back to the board. The board is clear, Madam Secretary.
Please vote.
I mean, I'm logged in, but the module still isn't popping up. Okay.
Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Mr. Lannis?
Yay.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Ware Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Dyson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Godex?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Alright, um, gotcha. Uh, the next item for consideration is the People Progression Plan for the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. Um, this is a item for consideration for a request of the approval of the issue's People Progression Plan for the 2020, 2021 school year. Ms. Council, would you like to add anything to this? Um, at this time, I'll take a motion. Sub move by Ms. Lannis, second by Mr. Bayday. Anything left, Madam Secretary?
Just on behalf of our committee, want to thank you all for considering this item, and I'd be remiss if I didn't start tonight by thanking you all for your support last April, when we had to institute an emergency amendment to our sitting People Progression Plan. This year's plan has, uh, minor changes. I provided you with backup that shows a chart, and if you look at your, uh, backup document on the plan itself, the proposed changes are in red. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Alright, the board is?
Ms. Bernard?
Ms. Bernard.
Ms. Okowsky, um, are we going to get any waivers from the state this year that might play into this People Progression Plan on anything? I'm thinking of, I've heard from a lot of parents, um, and even today, more parents, that they're struggling with the required instructional minutes, especially for their little biddies, the, the kindergartners. And then, of course, um, I'm also concerned about the state requirement for the, um, diagnostic, uh, evaluation instruments that are used at the beginning of the school year that have to be turned in by September 30th.
Right.
And where, where are we with that? Because those, those instruments were not developed, and the publisher didn't design those to be administered virtually. I guess since we're going to be back in hybrid model, that would be top priority.
It is, it is, and, and thank you for that question. At this time, there are no waivers on instructional minutes, or she's referring to the K-three literacy screeners and, uh, behavioral screeners that are required for grades K to three for students, and the data is due to the state by September 30th. Uh, we have had some conversations with both BESI officials and some state, um, ranking persons in their academics department, and at this time, they're not considering any waivers. So, our teachers and our staff have done a yeoman's job. Uh, we're having, as I told them on some of our calls, we're having to do some very familiar things in some very unfamiliar ways. Um, the, the team in this building has been awesome in partnering with our accountability staff, where we've been able to do some training videos and some simulations for teachers to show them how to administer this assessment virtually. And to your point, Mrs. Bernard, coming back in a hybrid phase will help us to capture that bit of data on those remaining students. So, no, ma'am, those items have not been waived. The only waiver at play right now is the state placement test that's required for students in grades five and nine who enter from out of a public school system. And so, because there was no operational leap test, that state placement test has been waived only for this year. And so, that's the only waiver in play right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Okowski. The board is clear. We will go to the audience. There is one online comment with anyone in the audience who should speak on this item. Alright, seeing now, the online comment is from Ms. Mary Johnson. Who are these so-called external parent stakeholders? Who decides what's versus matters? East Baton Rouge Parish School System, again, takes a mandate intended to increase transparency and fills it with rubber stamps. The People Progression Plan needs transparent oversight enough is enough in the fraud and corruption within the East Baton Rouge Parish School System, and true engage all stakeholders. That was from Ms. Mary Johnson. Um, there are no more online comments. Um, seeing no additional in-person comments, we will return to the board. Ms. Ware Jackson?
Thank you, Vice President Howard. Um, this, uh, this comment is based on both, uh, personal experience and comments that I've received from, um, parents and, uh, people who don't have kids in schools anymore. And it's, uh, I guess I could summarize it like this, it's, you know, people say that we promote kids with failing grades until they get to about the fourth grade, then they take the leap test, and we teach the test to get them through that, and then, again, it happens in the eighth grade. Then somehow, kids get to senior year and actually graduate, and they still can't read. Uh, we're obviously missing a vital link somewhere in there, and, uh, I think we need to take a much closer look at what we're doing, maybe what we've done historically, and, uh, what we can do to change some of these outcomes. In my personal experience, I've had, uh, young men work with me, and when I, when we ask them to read instructions, uh, we do some rehab, and we'll ask them to read something, and many of them can't get through a word that has more than two syllables, and it breaks my heart every time. And, um, you know, I, I don't know what to, what to say about it, what we need to do about it, but this has got to stop, you know? And I don't know if it falls somewhere within the, uh, people progression or what it is that we're doing or not doing, but there's definitely a disservice, and we've got to figure out what we can do so that, uh, our kids are on, on task. They can read, and they can write, you know? Writing is so very important, and it supports reading. I don't know how we can do one without the other. And I really believe that we need to put a lot of focus on that so that our kids are not struggling in the third grade, and parents are not concerned about their child failing the third grade and then finding out that, oh, no, Mrs. Johnson, we won't hold them back, well, but you better watch out when we get to fourth grade because we're gonna have to get through the leap test. And then, there's a panic, and we get a lot of kids that just give up. So, um, I don't know what the answer is. I wish I did, but I'm hoping that we can get together and put our heads together on this and figure out how to move forward with much better outcomes.
Thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board?
Ms. Collins?
Ms. Collins? Yeah, because it's, it's not showing up again, so.
I don't know why I keep feeling like I gotta touch the mic. Oh, um, I just want to say, I do, uh, agree with my colleague sentiment, um, don't profess to be, uh, an, an inexperienced, seasoned educator to come up with an answer, uh, but, um, the research, uh, fortunately, shows that both social promotion and holding them back have major negative consequences. So, like, I don't know if it's a matter of some helping medium or, like, some completely unique approach. Um, and so, I just wanted to, uh, say that I, I agree that we, definitely, there's something to be figured out. Um, and then, just also wanted to chime in, um, uh, to give the, uh, person that gave the public comment, um, I'm not quite sure why that person felt like the, uh, committee was not a transparent committee. I just happen to be personally aware that one of my constituents was invited, and that constituent is one that gives us a wholehearted. Um, and so, uh, I hate that that, uh, person, uh, I'm not sure will cause that person to have a negative experience or have a sentiment, uh, and, uh, I hope that we can work with them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins, Mr. Lannis.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Howard, and, uh, it was something that, uh, Ms. Jackson said that really, uh, that struck something in me, and I just wanted to put some context to what she said. Just recently, uh, I want to say about a month ago, so not so recent, but, uh, it was, uh, close enough. We received some information that displayed that 48% of our graduates are graduating with credentials that are below average. That's a problem. That's a problem that we have to fix immediately. This is an urgency, uh, for this particular matter because it affects so much, not just our school system, because at the end of the day, we are the foundation for everything in our city, more specifically, our labor workforce. If we have students that are graduating below average, or with credentials below average, that directly affects our labor workforce and our economy across our city. So, this is something that we definitely need to fix, and, uh, this is something that I would love to get more information on in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lannis. Um, seeing no additional comments from the board? Are there any additional comments from the board first? Alright, Mr. Godex?
Uh, just, the question, Ms. Lannis, could you inform us of what that information is? Because I don't remember seeing something for that. Maybe I missed it, but could you just identify where that's coming from?
Absolutely, so I remember, uh, what was this? This is quite a while back. We asked, um, Ms. Okowsky, because she produced, because I made a comment, I said that 52% of our African-American males will not graduate from high school, and Ms. Okowsky presented us with the information, and with, inside of the information, it also displayed how many students are graduating with credentials that are below average. So, that's actually inside of our emails, and you can go look that up, or Ms. Okowsky, if you could, if you want to speak on that. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okowsky, could you give us a little insight to that, please?
So, I, I don't have the report in front of me, but I can, I can resend it, but to Mr. Lannis's point, in Louisiana, there's a strength of diploma index, and so, each diploma is assigned a point value, and if you have advanced credentials, you get those advanced points for your diploma. So, I, I suspect he's referring to that category of students who didn't earn that, that layer of credential. And again, I can resend that data out to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Okowski, thank you, Ms. Lannis. Um, Madam Secretary.
Please vote.
I am curious.
The motion carries. The next item for consideration is the People Progression Plan for Basis Baton Rouge. It is a consideration for the request of the approval for the Basis, uh, the Basis Baton Rouge People Progression Plan for 2020, 2021 school year. I will entertain a motion at this time. Sub move by Mr. Godex? Second by Ms. Blue. Um, are there anything that Ms. Okowski or Mr. Ramirez would like to add? Alright, are there any questions or comments from the board? Um, I do have, if there are no additional questions or comments from the board, um, I do have a comment, um, so, I'm, I guess I would need Mr. Ramirez to come. I'm kind of confused at the, the need to have a separate People Progression Plan, um, for Basis. Um, I understand the charter model, I understand the autonomous, um, situations that charters find themselves in, but I don't know why this People Progression Plan, um, there's a change that's necessary based off the information presented. It seems like most of it takes place in the high schools. Uh, we know Basis has been built out, but it's not been, it's not, it hasn't reached the high school capacity right now, so I would just like to know, what is the urgency of approving a, a different or a separate People Progression Plan from the school district that already has a People Progression Plan in place, especially when there is not any really need for high school students, um, within the Basis model?
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, so, uh, first of all, thank you so much for, for obviously approving our charter. This is our third year here in Baton Rouge, but it has been a great experience. Uh, we have had a wonderful experience with our parents, with our teachers, the, the way the, the community is welcoming us.
Yes.
Um, I, I meant to tell you that, that I, I meant to, I meant to tell you that my team in Arizona is with me on the phone. Uh, they couldn't fly here to be here, so our, our chief operation officer is, is on the phone.
Yes.
So, what I was, what I was gonna say, it has been a great experience. Our standards normally exceed what the state where we operate, um, requires. So, for, for, to answer your question, um, we have, for example, this is our first year having sixth grade. Our sixth grade students are in the first year of pre-algebra, physics, chemistry, biology, the second, the second year of Latin. Um, we have, uh, an assessment at the end of the school year, we call comprehensive exam. We don't socially promote the students, we need to make sure they master the material that they have been exposed through a year before we can promote them to the next year. So, that particular piece of information is not in your People Progression Plan, and we will add it to ours. So, in order for us to, to maintain, uh, fidelity to the program that we tell the families in Baton Rouge that we were gonna offer, they can compare to across the nation, so we told the families here that they could expect from Basis Baton Rouge the same experience that they can, uh, that they can experience in Arizona, in Texas, in, in Washington, DC. And in order to do that, we just, we just want to make some slight modifications so that we can operate the same way we do across the country. So that particular piece of information is not in your People Progression Plan and we will add it to our ours. So in order for us to, to maintain, uh, fidelity to the program that we tell the families in Baton Rouge that we were going to offer, they can compare to across the nation. So we told the families here that they could expect from Basis Baton Rouge the same experience that they can, uh, that they can experience in Arizona, in Texas, in, in Washington, D.C. And in order to do that, we just, we just want to make some slight modifications so that we can operate the same way we do across the country.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Um, so yeah, I, I, thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Um, I, I struggle, um, with, with approving a separate People Progression Plan for, um, a couple of reasons. The one, the, the primary reason that I struggle with it is I think there needs to be a little more talk about the equity in this piece. Um, so when you start talking about, uh, equity in education and, and being exposed to all of these things, we know that there has been some, some criticisms, um, um, from Basis Baton Rouge around like how they are creating an equitable environment for all students to access the Basis education. The board has approved it, the school is doing well, there is a, a demand for the school, so I'm not, um, uh, countering that. But what I am saying is that there needs to be, um, a little more, um, talks around how is this People Progression Plan, People Progression Plan really, really equitable? And I don't see it being an equitable, um, need, um, in this, in this moment of creating a real equitable environment, like really changing the entire People Progression Plan from every other school, um, in this, in this place. And we, we talk about school trust, creating opportunities, so we want to create opportunities for as many kids as possible. And I'm not necessarily sure that this People Progression Plan will do that. So I would not be favoring, um, this progression, but I thank you for, um, that, that comment and, and clarification, Mr. Ramirez. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board?
Ms. Word, Ms. Dyson.
Ms. Dyson.
Thank you for clarifying some of that. Um, I, when I look at the plan, um, I am very, and, and also when I hear the community, um, I, I've heard nothing but positives. I, I don't get calls with concerns, uh, about how anything is being handled or, um, you know, I, I, I hear comments about the culture being very inclusive and, um, nurturing to the students. Um, I particularly like the, um, plan around the dyslexia program because that's one thing that I feel like, um, oftentimes is overlooked. And I feel like all students would benefit from early, um, diagnosis. If that is the case, the earlier they can start, um, the, with, with accommodations and, um, anything that can help increase their, their learning potential, um, is something that I support wholeheartedly. So, um, and I also, um, believe that, um, charter schools were actually, um, allowed in Louisiana to be models for, for our traditional school learning and to see what is working successfully in that situation and possibly, uh, look at those kinds of things in our own system. So I appreciate the partnership that you have and the good working relationship you have with our staff. Um, and, uh, I support this wholeheartedly. So thank you for being here and, uh, clarifying some of that. But I think that the social promotion aspect was, was brought up as a potential, um, red flag issue and it's interesting to see that that is one of your differences. So I think it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. Um, does that not mean that you're going to tell the student they can't stay, but that they need to repeat that year and get those educational milestones that they need to move on? And that may be, uh, in the best interest of the students. So we'll see how all that plays out, but thank you.
Yeah, and, and can I make a clarification? So, so yes, I thank you for, for that, that comment.
So we do have rigorous, uh, standards. We do make sure that the kids master the material before promoting them. But it's very important also to note is that we have a great academic support system. So interventions, I know there was discussed here, uh, what do we do if we socially promote or what do we do if we repeat the year? For us, the idea is make interventions on time so you don't have to make that tough decision and then you can close, um, the gap before you need to make that tough decision. So in this case, the students meet with teachers after school. So we have a program called, um, Student Hours where all of our teachers stay after school to tutor the students. So, and then if a kid doesn't pass a test, they have support over the summer through summer school to make sure that they can protect that test and be successful. So, so we, we, we support them so they can be better prepared for the following year.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Gutter.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Mr. Gutter.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I was going to say some of the same things that my co-board member, Ms. Dyson, just said that if you read through the changes, uh, that are in this, many of them are just technical issues, saying that they're going to have five grading periods instead of four and seven, six and seventh, or seventh and eighth years can earn high school credits and things like that. So a lot of this is technical. And again, I also reiterate that part of the reason to have charter schools is to provide innovation, innovation without some of the bureaucratic ties. So, uh, I'm willing to vote for this and let you guys do it. And my judgment's going to be at the end when we see how the pudding comes out. And, uh, we'll, we'll look at it then and see if that's, if this is doing the job it's supposed to do. Thank you.
Ms. Collins.
Uh, I'm glad you touched on, um, that you do, uh, assessments throughout because I was confused about why you need to do a whole nother, uh, requirement and review, uh, to make sure you're not socially promoting the child. If, seeing to me, the teachers are, the teachers not grading in a way that aligns with how you intend to promote the child in the first place. Um, uh, unlike my colleague, I have received complaints about Basis. Uh, the person actually lives in, uh, in the Woodlawn area. They only reached out to me not because they didn't think they could reach out to Ms. Dyson, but because we went to, uh, grad school together. Um, and, uh, she moved her child. Uh, I, I, I told her, I told her that it was not a good shift for her child. I, she thought different, which she had a right to, okay? Uh, but the proof was in the pudding. She did figure out exactly what I was explaining to her. Um, I want to ask more about this, uh, this grading, uh, scale and this conversion of the grades. Um, I'm looking at how you explain that your grades are a simple A through F, but I don't understand how if it's a simple A through F, then it also still requires a conversion from the Basis grade to the uniform grade. Can you help me understand those things, please?
Yes, thank you for asking that question. So in, in all of our other schools, and, and it's going to be the same, the difference is a percentage that goes in, in, without, with those letters. So in order for us to, we have a lot of internal benchmarks to make sure that our kids in the school in Basis Baton Rouge are performing equally to our kids in our schools in Arizona. They're, they're performing equally than the, the students in Texas. And in order to align internal benchmarks, so for example, we have a, a test that we call B of T that is coming in, in the next couple of weeks. In order to align learning weeks so that, so this test can be scheduled, it will facilitate that, that process if we can follow, or, um, the same grading scale that we have in other, in other schools so that we can compare performance between, between, among students. So, so, and, and this is an internal process, but we want it to be completely transparent with all of you, that we would like to do that. And once we need to report grades through, through the, through you and through the states, we will use J-Campus following, following the, the East Baton Rouge Parish grading scale.
Okay, thank you. Um, how Basis's requirements for K and first promotion differ from EBR's, uh, requirements? Because, uh, I did look, um, but it wasn't, I, I had a difficult time really making sure I understood what part of what you, uh, explained required a whole different policy. Can you help me understand that difference?
Yes, yes. Um, I, I'm, I'm not entirely sure if they're very different. So for example, we have five grading, five grading periods. Uh, let's talk about first grade. We have a class that, that is called Math and Science. A student needs to, needs to have a passing grade by the end of the, the, the last grading period, the last, the fifth grade period, um, in order to be promoted to, to the, to the second grade. But, uh, but again, before, before we do that, we have a lot of different benchmarks. For example, we use a program called Fast Reach and we need to make sure that that kid is reading at a grade level. And then we do interventions, uh, before we go to, you know, to the end of the school year. But to answer your question is they need to have a cumulative average of, of sixty to pass the, to pass the course by the end of the school year.
Okay, and then, um, my last question is about transfer students. I see the language. Um, and maybe this is similar, I, I don't, it just came across as odd, so just bear with me, help me understand. Transfer students, uh, may be placed in grades lower than their placement in, in their previous school?
So we want to inform parents. Um, for example, if, if I have next year a student that wants to come to Basis in seventh grade and our lowest level of math is Algebra I and the first, the first year of geometry, second year of physics, second year of chemistry, second year of biology, I just want to make sure that I, that I provide that parent with the known information about the kid's readiness so they make an informed decision by joining that grade level. Um, and then if a parent, after seeing that decision in coordination with us, decides that they probably are better placed in pre-algebra, then we will work with them to place them where they, where the student belongs academically.
Okay, but this is also, let me double check myself. Um, this language on the transfer is also in the lower grades. And that language, it, uh, my understanding of that language is that even between third through, to, from third to fourth, where it's not as, it's not just a simple subject, uh, but, but a whole grade, um, that the child could potentially transfer to the school that come in at a lower grade. Is that not my, a, a correct interpretation of what?
Yeah, like, um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure. What I can tell you that happens in practice is, um, we opened two years ago and we opened with four hundred kids. We didn't change the academic level that we offer in any other school in the country. And there were kids that came two years, two years behind that academic level and we didn't put them, you know, two, three years below. What we did is we rolled up our sleeves and worked very hard with those kids so they could close the gap. And thankfully, you know, after two years of, of being open, we see incredible progress with those students. So, so it doesn't happen, um, I, I, I can tell you it doesn't happen in elementary school because we have a lot of time to catch up those kids. It becomes more complicated when a student, um, is in seventh grade, eighth grade, when, when they're taking Algebra II, second year of geometry. So we need to inform parents, uh, of where the kids are in comparison to our curriculum.
Okay, um, and just to be clear, I'm reading here on page seven, which is in the Elementary Schools section. That the language says students may be placed in a lower grade than previously enrolled or classified based on results of readiness examinations. And help me understand this readiness examination again.
And I, and again, this is more geared to, to older elementary school students and middle school students. You, you know, you can ask, uh, like the families that you know at Basis if we have had any readiness exam before placing a kid in elementary and we have not. What we do is immediately after they join us, we do benchmarks so that we can, uh, create interventions for that student, um, you know, depending on their academic level. So, so, um, and to break it down a little more, uh, probably you know that we have two teachers in the classroom. Um, so we have subjects that we call a special such as art, drama, engineering, music, uh, P.E., martial arts, Mandarin. So during those classes, because we have two teachers, the elementary teacher can tell that special teacher like, hey, can I borrow this student for twenty minutes and can I, can I do an intervention outside of the classroom? So we do a lot of those things which are easier to accomplish in our model because we have two teachers in the classroom. So we see that, that gap being closed at a, at a much faster, uh, rapid, uh, pace than in a regular elementary school when the elementary teacher needs to, needs to touch all the subjects and on top of it do interventions.
Okay, um, I'm honestly just not clear on what you are explaining requires a whole separate policy. It's like, um, and maybe Ms. Okowski could help me understand. If a child goes to a magnet school, uh, depending on the magnet program, not all of them, uh, have stringent, uh, requirements, but some of them do and it's just kind of straightforward. You have to do A, B, C, D. If, if that doesn't work out, this is not a, you know, not a good fit for you, you know, along with the magnet program. This sounds more like, uh, uh, farm away the kind of counsel people out, which is very common in certain charter schools. Um, and so I'm not, I'm just genuinely not understanding, um, the need for some of these things in this policy to be separated and different from what we're doing if it's as simple as what you are explaining. I just, I'm not able to see that.
Yeah. Yeah, and I can, I can make another distinction and hopefully, um, that will help you understand and Vice President Howard probably hopefully like this can clarify a little bit. So we also believe that, for example, a sixty percent in a physics exam by the end of the year for a sixth grader should be sufficient for, for us to provide passing. If we, if we need to, instead of a sixty percent, give that kid a sixty-seven percent in order to promote him to the next year, I don't think we'd be paying fair to the students here in Baton Rouge in comparison to other kids in other, in other, in other jurisdictions.
Yeah, I, I'm not even arguing against that. Um, a D is a D or whatever your sixty percent is, uh, fifty-nine percent is a F. And I, and you failed that particular course and you have to take it again. So then there's something to this that is distinctly different in order for you to feel like you need a whole separate policy. And I'm not able to, uh, pick up on what that is in order for me to feel comfortable on approving this as it is. Because what I hate to do is, in my gut knows more to it than that, pass this and I have overlooked some language that this is really about. Um, and so I know y'all been working with Ms. Okowski on it. Uh, thank you for working with us on, on the language, but I would feel more comfortable, I, I can't, I, I can't support passing it in its current form. But what I can do is be supportive of y'all working on it some more, uh, so that things can be more clear, uh, for possible approval, uh, at the next meeting. And, uh, and so I would like to offer a substitute motion if I can get a second on that.
I'll, I'll second a substitute motion.
Okay, to move without recommendation.
To move the item to the regular meeting?
Yes, sir, thank you, without, without recommendation.
Mr. Howard, you just? Yes, I will second the motion. All right, so, um, thank you, Mr. Ramirez. So at this time, do I need to go back to the audience for the substitute motion? All right, so I will go, um, are there any additional questions or comments from the board on the substitute motion? The substitute motion is to move this Basis People Progression Plan without recommendation to the regular board meeting. There is no comments from the board.
Ms. Norv was in the queue, I don't know if she's?
Oh, I don't, it, it, oh, okay, Ms. Norv. I'll come to you in a second, Ms. Penney.
Mr. Ramirez?
Yes.
I have some questions for you. Thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
On page eight, it says, this is under the section regarding transfers from approved public schools within the state or outside of Louisiana. And it says that, um, about the middle of the paragraph, "Such placement will be maintained until complete documentation is obtained from transferring school and/or Basis Baton Rouge determines other placement based on internally conducted readiness assessments. Complete documentation shall include a properly certified tr-" Complete documentation shall include a properly certified transcript showing the student's record of attendance, achievement, immunization records, and the units of credit earned. Students may be placed in a lower grade level than previously enrolled based on the results of the Basis Baton Rouge administered readiness examinations." What is, what is the name of the examination that you're giving?
It's just, it's a, it's a readiness test.
It's a readiness test?
Created by, by us.
Created by whom?
By, by us, by Basis.
It's not a, created by an educational publisher?
No, it's, it's, it's an internal assessment.
Oh, so it's not normed then? It, it doesn't compare the student to other students in the same grade level across the country or even in the state or something like that? So you're saying it's just?
It, it, it does in the sense that we have schools across the country. So we know the, based on the performance of a, of a kid, an assessment for, for the kid, it predicts how well they're gonna do in that, in that, in that grade or in that particular class.
So you're comparing it to other students who attend Basis schools in other parts of the country?
Yes.
I, I can't support this pupil progression plan. If you're not using a nationally normed or a state normed test that compares, that is not an acceptable measure or an acceptable placement instrument. Thank you, thank you for answering my question.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. And I'll just make, uh, make my last comment. And, and the reason that I'm, I'm supporting my colleague in this motion and I agree with a lot of what she said. Typically what you see with these programs, people don't like to have a conversation, but it is used as a lead-up program to, to, so certain students, we know, for example, doing enrollment in, in Baton, in Louisiana is a problem that we see with minority participation. One of the reasons why we see a problem with minority participation is because the average ACT score for minority students in our state is dismal. But yet there's a qualification that you have to read a certain pivotal point on ACT in order to access doing enrollment in the state. But there's no intentional actions or plans to develop those students so that they can meet the mark. I think exposure to rigor is the goal, it is the key. But I don't think it's necessary to have a separate pupil progression plan in order to expose those kids to that. I, I think it's great that you offer additional resources and, and additional supplemental instructions so that kids can meet the mark. But like putting that inside of a pupil progression plan is problematic for me. Um, and so that's what I'm saying, I don't think that there's been enough work done around the equity of this particular pupil progression plan. And I'm open to reasons I support this motion to have conversations so that we can make this more transparent and more equitable so that more kids can be exposed to the rigor that is necessary to get the educational outcomes that Basis has provided across the nation. Um, so thank you for that. Um, seeing no additional comments or questions from the, the board, we'll go to the audience.
Thank you. First, it's not your problem whether Basis can compare their Baton Rouge scores to Arizona, Texas, Washington, D.C. or anywhere else. They made an application to be part of the system that you run. So what matters is comparing Basis Baton Rouge to other East Baton Rouge publicly funded schools. Uh, I would suggest to Ms. Collins that she amend her substitute motion slightly and move consideration of this to the October committee of the whole, and here's why. In two weeks, you will presumably pass by acclamation the new pupil progression plan for all the other schools in the system. If Basis cannot comply with that, they should very specifically indicate those very few items in your hundred and some page pupil progression plan that give them issues. And they should point by point ask you for exceptions, you know, five grading periods rather than four. Those should be tied to your pupil progression plan in very few and very specific ways. I don't think you should give them the opportunity to just dump your whole plan and substitute something else. It's not reasonable to expect parents to compare your hundred and thirty-three pages to their thirty or whatever it is. If they want deviations from your plan, they need to be very specific. But more importantly, it's Mr. Howard's point about equity. You're already allowing this school to break their contract and break state law by not educating enough students who are economically disadvantaged. And I concur with the perception that at least a few of you have that this will make that worse, not better. We need to be moving them to be compliant with the law and the contract or else they just need to give up their charter and switch to the private school model. They can't apparently attract enough economically disadvantaged students with their current model. And this isn't helping and I think you should defer it at least two weeks, but even better defer it to October. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments in the room, we will move to the online comments. The board member is correct that most of the pupil progression plan pertains to higher grades. But remember that the Basis current class is equivalent to high schools in East Baton Rouge private school system. For example, my child is in the sixth grade and is taking biology, chemistry, and physics currently are high school courses. Excuse me, this comment is coming from Fan Ta. By eighth grade, he will take Algebra II in eleventh grade course. With that being said, Basis does need a differentiated plan to reflect the rigor here. My child is in East Baton Rouge private school system magnet program and the rigor of Basis is beyond anything I've seen. There are only a few edits that I requested. I'm unsure what the specific player of plan the board member hasn't issued. To allow sixty percent as passing instead of sixty-seven only makes it more equitable for all students. A board member asks, this comment comes from Hayes Leonard. A board member asks about why another test is needed and why would you need a test if your students are accessing? Basis requires a comp test for the same reason East Baton Rouge private school system requires students pass the LEAP. For Basis, the LEAP test is not enough because the content basis only has anything between, anything between two to five levels above. So the test needs to be more rigorous than the LEAP test. These needs need to have a baseline to help them succeed for next year. And not pass students on for them facing hardships because we're not ready academically. Also, for those who don't pass the test, they will get opportunities to remediate and retake the test. The next comment comes from Jennifer Harding. I am very concerned with this item, create this item, creating a completely different track for Basis students that would be impossible to transfer in to unless you start at the beginning and it would be easy to counsel our students who struggle. Innovative doesn't, doesn't mean you get to create your own separate system within our public school system. This is not what choice means. I highly recommend more time to research this. This seems to be violation of the board's Rachel Equity Resolution and if it needs more time to be discussed, researched, and adjusted. More time to be, more time to research or it should be denied tonight. Basis should not have a separate track. That concludes the online comments. I'll refresh the screen one more time and if there are more additionals, I will turn back to the board. Um, seeing more addition, oh, sorry. Ms. Bernard and Ms. Jackson? Uh, two additional public comments. And Marie, gotcha. Why do we need a separate progression plan for Basis? They're creating a completely separate track that would be impossible to transfer into. Charter schools are supposed to be innovative, but innovative doesn't mean you get to create your own separate accountability system within our public school system. How many students do they quote counsel out every year? Next comments come from Blad Laguna. When I look online, East Baton Rouge private school system also requires some form of test to support elementary grade. And these tests are not a state test or anything, Ms. Bernard, as Ms. Bernard mentioned. So why do those magnet and gifted programs allow for readiness tests for Basis not? When we know Basis is in much more rigorous, students do not need to be ready and not set up for failure. It is actually an injustice if you just ask students to grade purely due to their grade. Why would you not want them placed correctly so that they can succeed and grow? Instead of placing them in a grade that they have strong tendencies to fail? And this is based on the fact that this test has been used for many years in many successful Basis schools. Also, as far as it being not a good comparison because it's compared to Basis schools, it needs to be compared to Basis schools as they are going to be a Basis school. You know, and I want to say that it's not fitting of the expectations of the school.
She repeated it.
She repeated, yeah. Yep. Yeah, she, she was got, did I, Ms. Harris? She, yeah, she repeated it. Um, are there any additional questions or comments from the board or no additional online comments from the audience?
Ms. Dyson?
Ms. Dyson?
It seems to me that, um, the social promotion is setting students up for failure. If they do not, if it catches up with them, like a colleague said in the fourth and eighth grade, when it's, if, if that is in fact the case, that that is happening often, then some of the social promotion is setting them up for failure. What I have seen, and my belief is that this model is setting students up for success in the long run. Instead of immediate success, I pass this grade, success that will follow them through a lifetime. If you're not ready, if your child is not ready, you really, I believe, need to strongly consider what needs to happen to make sure we don't bypass those needed skills and keep on going because sooner or later it catches up with them. A dyslexic student, if not given appropriate accommodations, can hunt and peck for a long time for a few grades and be the silent one in the class and not volunteer to speak out loud. And some of them have very good, uh, thinking and creative skills and they can look at the illustrations and they can tell you what the whole story's about. But don't ask them to read out loud. But it's interesting that they can tell you the content. And so if, if they just get passed along, then I don't believe it's doing the right thing for them in the long run. I think their model is, is doing something different, trying something different that they've had, had success with in other locales across the country. And I'm all for, um, trying things that seem to be working somewhere else and hoping that they work here as well, which so far they seem to. Uh, and I, I just don't believe in giving someone, um, saying that we're giving autonomy and then micromanaging how they're going to do this. I think that, um, it's incumbent on us to allow their process so that we can have a few years, a few more years of seeing what it, how the students are succeeding there. So, um, if they, also, I'm sure that if they are deciding along with the family and, and all to hold back because summer school remediation hasn't and on, all along the way hasn't, which it sounds like they're trying to catch it soon enough to where that wouldn't happen. But if it were to happen, it might be, end up being the best thing for that child and for that family in the long run. So I, I have to support because we've given them the, um, we, we say we give them the autonomy and it might provide some things that we might want to try ourselves within the law, of course. Thank you.
Ms. Collins?
And if I can acknowledge myself because I didn't put myself in the request to speak. So a couple of things, uh, and some of these, the public comments resonate with me. Um, literally education should not be a lottery. Within our district, we've already created a system that if you don't win the magnet school lottery, the chances of you getting high quality education is very slim to none. Factoring in being a minority student and not winning the magnet school lottery, you are literally left for dead getting that education within the system. So the fact that we're gonna bring in schools like Basis to again add to the possibilities of education saving lives in our city, but then allow them to basically create another lottery that you cannot get in unless, if you don't win the Basis lottery now, your educational outcomes again dismal. So if we're gonna create this anti-racist resolution and we're gonna really be anti-racist board members, we have to figure out how do we create opportunities in education that, so that every single kid within this district has a chance. But right now, what we're saying is that every single kid in this, this district does not have a chance because we want to allow people to come in. Basis is a great program. They have educated a lot of great students across the nation, but it should be accessible to every single student. You won't be able to transfer into the school, period. So that's another sector of kids who don't have access to rigor and high quality education. So if we're gonna really be about the business of educating all kids or what people like to throw out the word all, we need to do it. And this is not helping in any way create better educational opportunities for every single student within this district, point blank and a period. So if you want to sit on a board that says forty thousand diverse students, you need to make sure that you're creating access and opportunity for every single one of them students. If not, this is really not the place for you and I really don't understand how could some of you have acquired these seats for so long if you really are not about the business of all kids? And so that's what we're doing. We are literally continuing to limit the access and opportunity to quality education for every single student in this class in this district by creating additional requirements for them to access high quality. So if you want to be about school trust, be about school trust, but be about school trust for every single kid in this district. Ms. Collins?
Ms. Okowski, please explain what social promotion is. How does social promotion happen?
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Our, our current plan as written and hasn't for years had a social promotion section. Students may be or promoted one of two ways. The first way I like to explain to parents is academically by your report card. Did I earn the grades and the quality points to pass? If I did, I get promoted. If I did not, there is a second mechanism to, to provide a second lens for students. Sometimes there are extenuating circumstances. Obviously this year, it needs no explanation for that. That's the SBLC process. We do have a section in our plan on the SBLC process and we direct our principals to look for certain key data points. As a matter of fact, they are coached. Do not SBLC a student unless you can't, you have the data to support it because it will be audited and we take promotion and credit earning attainment very seriously to protect the integrity of our diplomas, of our transcripts, and the grades our students earn. So I thank you for that question.
So, but to be clear, our pupil progression plan does not automatically translate into social promotion of students?
No, not because you're a certain age. I mean, obviously you start kindergarten and first grade at a certain age, but not because you're a certain age or you're in a certain grade. And even at the high school level, you have to earn certain credits to progress.
So if a child has Ds and Fs on their report card, then we don't just automatically say, baby, go to the next grade? There's no extra test that we need to do either for us to have that understanding that little Johnny made straight Fs in second grade? Clearly little Johnny is not ready for third grade. We don't have an extra test on top of that in order to determine that little Johnny doesn't need to go to the third grade?
You have to earn the quality points associated with the grades to be promoted to the next grade. As a matter of fact, our J campus setup is organized as such that a human has to check the promotion box. It's not automatic in ABR.
I just want to be clear that whether their approach to what they choose to do is really good for the students on their campus, let us not pretend that this is about the, the, the harsh realities and pitiful outcomes of a social promotion process. It's not about social promotion. You don't have to associate, this policy is not gonna, not doing this policy is not gonna force Basis to socially promote. That's not what we're talking about. I just wanted to lay that on the table because I get tired of folks waving flags about how we doing a great injustice and in many ways we do, okay? But sometimes people wave the flag and that's, that's just to distract people from really understanding what's actually going on. Um, in terms of, do we also, what do we do if we see little Johnny, his first nine weeks not doing well? Do we just let little Johnny continue to not do well?
No, ma'am, actually that's the purpose of some of the screeners that Mrs. Bernard referenced. So when students enter the school year, you do those original screeners and diagnostics and then you benchmark along the way. And you meet as a team to make those data-driven decisions to do interventions on a child. Uh, as you all very well know, Louisiana did remove the fourth and eighth grade requirement. But when they removed it, they put in its place for third and fourth graders an IAIP, Individual Academic Improvement Plan. So if a student is not basic on the LEAP test in a core area, they are mandated onto that plan. As I explain it to parents, that plan stays with them in their backpack until they earn a basic in that subject area that led them to be identified. And they carry it with them until the IGP. and they carry it with them until the IGP at the high school level. That plan mandates that as a district, as a system, we have to choose four of state mandated, two of four state mandated interventions for that child. Tier one curriculum, which we know every child in this district has access to, a highly effective or effective proficient teacher, which we hope most children in this district have access to, if not all, remediation during the school year and in the summer. And then, obviously, the school can add to that list, but you have to choose two of the four off of the state's template. You have to have those conversations with those parents. I will say, Basis does have those conversations with those parents, because the first time that they had one, it was me for all of us. I was very appreciative of the fact that Mr. Ramirez invited me to participate in that, in that process with him. So, all schools are, are mandated to follow that IAIP process. And then, at, at the eighth grade level, as well, I know you're familiar with, it's the transitional ninth grade situation. Where, again, you have to have the documentation for the placement of that child.
Okay. Again, I just wanted to be clear, because if you allow them to frame this as if this is really about not wanting to socially promote children, and then you make the argument that they're reading out children of color, then what it sounds like you're doing is saying children of color can't make it. You got to lower the standards for children of color. That's not what's going on. I just want to make sure it's very clear that that is not what's happening. I look forward to us continuing to work with Basis on their policy. Thank you.
Mr. Godey?
Thank you, Vice President Howard. I was not going to speak on this, but I feel like I have to. First of all, Mr. Howard, I know you're very emotional about this subject, but I really don't appreciate being lectured to and told why I sit on this board or why I shouldn't sit on this board.
First of all, I guarantee, listen, listen, I have the floor. Lane, call your name. You go with, this is my meeting, first of all. And I didn't call you, so you can address the floor, but don't address me, because I did not call your name. Let's be very clear.
I was not speaking at the time, and I was only, the speaker at that time challenged the why members of this board sitting with board. And I guarantee you, I sit on this board because I care about children, and I care a lot about what happens to children. And I really want to do the right thing for children. And I, as a member of this board, don't appreciate being lectured to as to why I sit on this board. So, that's first of all. Second of all, we can talk a lot about a lot of things about this. As Mr. Finney so greatly pointed out, there is a requirement in the Basis contract and a requirement in state law for them to meet certain minimum standards on numbers of minority students and free and reduced lunch students. It's my intention to hold them to that and push them very hard to that. But I also want to make all of you know that we have the foreign language American school, which has a smaller percentage than what Basis has in free and reduced lunch, and a smaller percentage of what they have in minority students. And I guarantee you, a kid coming in fifth grade can't transfer into the foreign language American school. We do it ourselves. And so, now we're sitting here trying to micromanage what they're trying to do. I think what we need to do is let them have their program, and in three years, when a contract comes out, we hold their feet to the fire and judge them. We have, in my personal opinion, we have gone, as a district, way too far down the magnet path. We have created magnet schools at every spot, everywhere through this, and we have neglected the regular students. And that's something I have high on my priority, is to make sure we return the focus to our, of ourselves to the regular students, because those are the ones, I feel, are getting left behind. Baton Rouge High has zero spread students. No one talks about that. Lehigh has almost zero spread students. Nobody talks about that. You look at the percentages in these different schools, and we're doing exactly the same thing they're doing, but we call them magnets, so it's okay. And so, we have to look at ourselves in the mirror first as we do this. And we have a contract with these people, and I think we ought to quit trying to micromanage it and let them run their school. And then, when it comes up for judgment, it comes up for judgment, and we judge it. But I think we're doing them and our students a disservice trying to get in the mood of how they want to run their program, because after all, that is why charter schools are, are put into place. We have to look at the mirrors, because we have schools that are worse than that in exactly the same things that you're, that is being brought up as to reasons why this has to be an issue. And so, if we're not even solving ours, how can we put stuff into theirs to solve theirs? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Lanis?
To collect my thoughts for a minute, it's a lot of emotion inside of the room. But what I would do is I'll give everybody a hand clap. And this is the reason why. We, and I can appreciate all the conversations tonight. Let me say that first and foremost from our audience who are watching, or the, or the public, and also from the board. I would only push and say, the same energy that we are putting towards Basis, we do the same thing towards every single school in EBR. Here's the reason why. The main thing that will affect pupil progression is staffing. We still have schools in EBR that do not have teachers. I think one of the audience members brought this up. This is not just a new issue. This was over a year since this school was recently reopened, and the school still does not have an arts teacher there. That is a problem. You want to talk about pupil progression? How about let's talk about full-time students inside of classrooms teaching choir classes for an entire year? Even if you have a student that tests us, and when they do take the test and they score as advanced, if you have a full-time student inside of their classroom, they're missing vital pieces that they need to progress effectively. And I will push and say this, it's not the case that people are not talking about this. It's that, it's the same people saying it over and over and over, but everybody is not listening. Because I can promise you, we have been talking about this till we have all been blown in the face, but what has been happening? As board members, that is our job to make sure we hold everybody accountable. But sometimes when you hold some people accountable, you know what happened? You get pushback. So, what are we supposed to do? Just sit on our hands while the same thing has been happening over and over and over? There's a word for that. It's called insanity. And that's what's happening. So, until we push for more accountability all across the board, not just for charter schools, but for our traditional schools, to more specifically, traditional schools, we're going to continue to get the same results over and over and over. It does not matter who sits in these seats. It does not matter who is running the reins. We're going to continue to get the same results, because that's what's been happening. We haven't seen any drastic changes happen in EBR, and when we do see some stagnated levels of achievement, we get happy. It's not enough, because at the end of the day, as I just indicated, 48% of students that are graduating in EBR are graduating below average. What does that affect? It affects workforce. It affects crime. But we're not talking about that. So, I'll just leave it at, at that right there.
Thank you, Mr. Lanis. Ms. Collins?
I just want to make something real clear. While I actually do agree, even though I advocated for magnet programming in my own district, and I'm very proud that my district have received that, I do actually agree with some of the concerns lifted up about our magnet programming, but I want to make sure people understand something. Our magnet, it's not, it's not the fault of it being magnet. Magnet programming is thematic, okay? It does not have to have the requirements that Lehigh, that Lehigh and many other others do. And in fact, many of our, several of our magnets do not, okay? The ones in my district do not. It's about engaging the students based on the rigor of a thing, okay? That being said, I also have to lift up the fact that in spite of those things, that we are all on the same page, that need to be worked on with our magnet programs, our magnet programs do not require a separate policy to, to have those issues. And so, it causes me concern of the nature of this policy. And I think that the language and the details need to be worked on, because I don't understand why they need a separate policy to do what they are professing to try to accomplish with this, okay? I just don't see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. There are no additional board comments. We'll go to the audience. All right, there are a few digital comments. Are there any digital comments?
The last comment is from Fong again to the members, to the board member. It is not about who are making DOF. They won't move on either in Basis, just like EBR schools. It's kids who make AB in EBR schools, but make their 13% in the LEAP. Those kids cannot run eighth grade. Kids who make DOF at Basis also cannot move on, so that's the same as East Baton Rouge private schools. The difference is the test EBR does is the LEAP. Basis is adding a harder test due to the courses they're taking. A student in the eighth taking the LEAP is being tested on pre-algebra. The student in eighth grade in Basis is taking Algebra II. Does it make sense for that student to just pass a pre-algebra test and move on? Is that accurate of what the students need? That is the last digital comment. We will come back to the board. Seeing no one in the queue, we are voting on the substitute motion to move this item to the regular board meeting without recommendation, Madam Secretary.
Please vote.
The motion carries. Our next item for consideration is... The motion carries. Our next item is our next meeting dates and announcements. Announcements of meeting. The regular board meeting will be held on September 17, 2020, at 5:00 PM at the Professional Education Center. This will be an in-person meeting without any, with, meeting without an online public comment option. Committee of the Hall will be held on October 1st, 2020, at 5:00 PM at the Professional Education Center. This will be an in-person meeting without an online public comment option. At this time, leave this meeting adjourned.